I will call this meeting back in session if we would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And following the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd ask everyone to have a moment of silence out of respect for Mr. John Reeves, one of our past council people who passed away last Friday, and his funeral will be this Thursday. So let's, the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to further state that John Reeves was the city councilman from 1995 to 97. Prior to that, he had served on the Total Living Commission for a number of years and also had been a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals as well as the currently serving on the Local Officers Compensation Commission. Mr. Reeves was president of his Neighborhood Association at one time, Washington Heights, and was an active citizen who was very concerned about and involved in his community. We do have a resolution that council members signed this evening. That resolution will be presented on Thursday at the funeral, 11:00 a.m. at the...
Plymouth.
Just lost my place. It's Plymouth United Church of Christ is where the funeral take place. That's 600 East Warren Avenue in Detroit. And the family hour is at 10:00 that day as well as the service starts at 11:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, this evening, we are going to have a public hearing on a single lot assessment. And a single lot assessment is for those expenses that have been incurred by the city on for excessive false alarms, tall grass that we've had to mow, and other things that have violated some of our ordinances. Once a year, we do the single lot assessment, and if they're not settled, they go as a lien against your property. If you're in the audience this evening because some property that you have or you're having a single lot assessment lien, our assessor will be here. If you raise your hand, assessor, he's in the audience. And if you would like to start talking with him now and see if you can't settle the issue before the public hearing comes up, you're welcome to do that now. And if you can't resolve the issue, then you'll be able to talk with us at the public hearing. So anytime that you feel that you want to talk to the assessor, he will be out in the hallway, so feel free to do that. We have two presentations. The first presentation is a joint resolution on Small Business Week. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening once again. I'm not sure if David Dallow is in the audience. I expected him this evening. David represents the, is the president of the Southfield Chamber of Commerce who we're presenting this resolution to. The second resolution, both of these are joint resolutions. The second resolution we'll be presenting is on Welcoming City. And Mr. Cruz will help me with that one as that came through the council's legislative committee. So I will make sure since in Mr. Dallow's absence that this gets to him. But we have a resolution tonight declaring our support for National Small Business Week April 30th to May 6th. Whereas every year since 1963, the President of the United States has issued a proclamation announcing National Small Business Week, which recognizes the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners. And whereas more than half of all Americans either own or work for a small business, and whereas they create nearly two out of every three new jobs in the U.S. each year. And whereas, as part of the National Small Business Week, the U.S. Small Business Administration takes the opportunity to highlight the impact of outstanding entrepreneurs, small business owners, and others from all 50 states and U.S. territories. Every day, they're working to grow small businesses, create 21st century jobs, drive innovation, and increase America's global competitiveness. And whereas, locally in Southfield, the Chamber of Commerce actively works to promote and support small businesses in an effort to help them to succeed and grow. And whereas, in recognition of National Small Business Week, the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce will host a retail development kickoff on May 1st from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. at the Chamber office in the Arbor Lofts building. And whereas, the Chamber has partnered with Google to host this free workshop to help Southfield businesses increase their online presence. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and the city council, the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby proclaim April 30th to May 6th, 2017, Small Business Week. And be it further resolved that we, the mayor and city council, city of Southfield, do hereby recognize and support Small Business Week and the work of the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce in supporting and promoting small businesses in Southfield. And it's signed by each of you and myself. I would also mention that last week, we received word in a national study that the city of Southfield, Mr. Fraser is going to help me, was either 56th or 59th of all the cities in the country that has a great place to do business. And a lot of this had to do with the fact that we have, we partnered with Lawrence Tech on our collaboratory. We have a Smart Zone, our business incubator, as well as our Career Center, helping people get jobs and support their small businesses, their startups. We also have proof in Southfield that we have a number of tech companies, two that come to mind immediately, that started in garages in Southfield and now occupy considerable amount of commercial space. And we know that every January, we do our ACE Challenge, our Accelerator Challenge, Business Accelerator Challenge. This year, this past January, 34 companies competed in that. These are all things that we sponsor along with supporting the Chamber and Lawrence Tech in their efforts to help business grow in the city of Southfield. Our second resolution is the Southfield as a welcoming committee, or community rather, for immigrants and refugees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, and council, again. This is a joint resolution with the mayor, along with all of us, that was generated initially through legislative committee. That is Councilman Brightwell and Councilwoman Morris, both, and myself are part of. And it was brought to us by the mayor. We definitely agreed, and I'm glad that council took this up. And it may, you know, talking about us being a welcoming city may to some degree seem a little mom and apple pie kind of thing, but it really isn't. I mean, it is a statement about who we are as a city. And we do want people to know that the city of Southfield is a welcoming city to all individuals. And keeping in mind that not only is that good for us in terms of just our overall reputation with individuals, but in the business communities as well. We're a city that is open to all people to come in to, as we always talk about, work, live, play, and beyond. So we did want to have this resolution and go on record for it because I think there is some value in actually making these types of statements so that there is no question as to where we as a city, what our position is on certain issues. And so we're actually, and we're joining some other neighboring communities that have done similar type resolutions. And so today, again, we want to bring this resolution forward. And I'll just share it with you right now. Says, whereas the city of Southfield believes in the innate dignity of all people and acknowledges honors and values our immigrants and migrant roots, and embraces the values of family, faith, and hard work. And whereas, the city of Southfield celebrates diversity and recognizes that invaluable contributions to our social, religious, cultural, and economic landscape have come from a wide variety of racial and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas, the city of Southfield and the southeastern Michigan region as a whole has long been a home of immigrants from all around the world who come seeking opportunity, stability, prosperity, and a better life for their families. And whereas, the city of Southfield has long been recognized as hospitable and welcoming place where people, families, and institutions thrive, and their contributions are all celebrated and valued, and is committed to being a diverse, inclusive, and global city as evidenced by our publicly supported human rights ordinance. And whereas, recent events on the national stage demand that people and communities of conscience speak out in defense of and reaffirm their commitment to the most basic American value. And whereas, as evidenced by recent, oops, sorry, read that one already. No, I actually didn't. Whereas, as evidenced by recent national studies that listed the city of Southfield sixth in the nation for a decade of reduced crime and steady influx of immigrants. And whereas, the city of Southfield will continue to provide a neighborly, welcoming atmosphere where all are respected and accepted, and a welcoming city, and the welcoming city of Southfield initiative aims to bring cooperation, respect, and compassion among all in our city, including immigrants and non-immigrants alike. Endeavors to create an atmosphere in which immigrants and refugees have increased opportunities to integrate into the social fabric of their adopted hometowns, and seeks to embrace diversity while supporting and retaining unique cultural identities. And whereas, by joining the National Welcoming Cities and Counties Initiative, the city of Southfield commits to institutionalizing welcoming efforts through the adoption of policies and practices that promote inclusion within local government and the broader community. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Southfield on April 24th, 2017, that the city of Southfield is affirmed as a place where all foreign-born and native-born Americans can live, work, and play together, sharing each other's customs and ideas, and appreciate and promote cultural diversity. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor, and the city and the council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland County, state of Michigan, do hereby declare on this day, April 24th, 2017. So again, we just wanted to make sure that we had this statement on record as well. And I think while most people probably feel that way about Southfield already, for us to reach out and make a statement and proclaim our openness to diversity and to all ethnic groups and racial groups and so on and so forth, just makes us a stronger city and it just reaffirms who we are already. So we thank the council for your support on this. And I think that's about it for today.
It may not seem like it, but those two resolutions are linked together because there are many immigrants that come into a community and become entrepreneurs and start small businesses and are very successful at running their businesses. So being a welcoming city and celebrating small businesses, we have both ends of the scale. The next item on our agenda are appointments. And I believe our mayor has several appointments to make this evening?
I do, and thank you once again. I'd like to ask Jeffrey Ligon, Deborah Cashdon. We're also asking Dale Wachkowski, who is not here this evening. He asked, he's out of town this evening. And Janet Stevens, if she's in the chambers, to come forward. I'm asking the council to appoint, we have two new positions. And I'll use this as a moment to advertise that we have an empty seat on the Public Art Commission, and we're looking for someone to fill that seat. We added two seats to the commission. And one of those seats I'm recommending to be filled this evening by Jeffrey Ligon, Southfield resident, who has an extensive background in art. I'm also asking the council for the reappointment of Deborah Cashdon, an accomplished Southfield artist. And then to the City Center Advisory Board, the reappointment of Dale Wachkowski of Reddico and Janet Stevens is who's the alternate. Mr. Ligon is here this evening. I want to present you with this. And we have the clerk who'll do the...
Well, for...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun again, so. Last time, I forgot the clerk, so.
I need a motion to approve these appointments and reappointments.
Support?
It's been moved by Ms. Seymour, supported by Mr. Mantelbaum, that we approve the appointment of Jeffrey Ligon, Ligon?
Ligon.
Okay. I guess you know better than I do.
I'm French.
Deborah Cashdon, Dale Wachkowski, and Janet Stevens to their...
Alternate.
As an alternate. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Now...
Now the clerk.
Now the clerk.
I'm just anxious to get them on board, so.
Of course.
If you'll both raise your right hand, if I swear or affirm that you will support the path of the Constitution of this state, Southfield, and that you will be part of the Arts Commission and support the path of the Constitution of this state.
Thank you.
And then, right here, please. Yes.
As long as, why don't throw me off the bridge here? No, you wouldn't. No, you wouldn't. No, you wouldn't.
Congratulations. Thank you for accepting.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you for doing this.
The other ones have to be sworn in, I believe, for the reappointments, don't they?
I'm not sure.
Chairman?
Yes.
To the city clerk, do the reappointments have to be sworn in when they are reappointed or not necessarily?
Sometimes they come to our counter, and then we will swear them in if they've been absent from the meeting.
Next item on our agenda are, we have two sets of minutes, one for March 27th, 2017, for the regular meeting, and a committee of the whole meeting of April 3rd, 2017.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 27th, 2017, and a committee of the whole meeting minutes of April 3, 2017.
Support?
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the two sets of minutes as read. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. And we have a number of items on our consent agenda, which we talked about earlier in the front part of our meeting, so I will go through them very quickly. We have a liquor license request for the Sky Harbor-Southfield, which is the Marriott Hotel. It's a simple request for a liquor license. They have passed all the tests for our police department and the building department. So the liquor license is approved by the state. We only look at the building and our local ordinances, and they have met all of our local ordinances. The item B is our West Nile virus prevention. And we had a presentation at an earlier part of our meeting. And we're eligible for a $9,941.73 grant under the program that to get rid of the mosquito larvae that have the West Nile virus. Item C is a proposed modification of consent judgment for Home Depot property. And there is a consent judgment, the change in the consent judgment is to allow for more signage out in front. The front 1.22 acres was of the Home Depot parking lot adjacent to Southfield Road has been sold, and it will be a pad that will be the home of some new businesses. And the current consent judgment only allows the Home Depot to have their sign there. The modification to the consent judgment will allow four signs, which will take into account the new businesses and Home Depot that are there and are asking for our approval. The next item on our consent agenda is Southfield Police Department, watch guard, police, it's a, there are cameras in the police vehicles. We have 46 cameras in the police vehicles, and we have warranties. The warranty that we're asking to extend are for the year five and year six, which will take us through 2000, the year 2019. The next item on our agenda is a police open house. There was a presentation earlier, and the police open house will be held on Sunday, May the 21st, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in the south parking lot of the Civic Center, which is near the police department. And also, the plaza, in the event of rain, people can get in under the overhang so that they can stay dry and still have fun. It's anticipated that this open house will not exceed $10,000. And it will be a family-friendly event where there will be bicycle events, there will be food, there will be other things for the families. The mounted police from Detroit will be here. And they're asking to allow us, for us to allow them to land the Oakland County Sheriff's helicopter on the front lawn. And so it'll be a good thing for the whole family to come out, so the children can learn about the police department, about the things that we do, that adults can learn about that. They will also have the canine corps, and they'll put them through their paces. So that's always a fun event to watch the dogs work. And so that will be the 21st of May. And the last item on our consent agenda is receipt of proposals for deer browse monitoring services. If you live in Southfield, you know we have a number of deer that are all over Southfield. What we're trying to do is we're trying to count the deer. We're trying to find out the population, the deer population. And actually, we are only one of several communities that are going through this. And I want to be explicitly clear, this is not an opportunity to reduce the herd. We are only trying to get the census of the number of deer that we have. We have experts that have bid on this. There were 16 people that looked at the opportunity to bid. Only two did bid on this. And the winning bid is Nature Right LLC out of Ann Arbor. And what they will do is they will come in and advise us what we should do to be able to count the number of deer come close to counting the number of deer that we have. And so we will know how to manage the deer herd as years go on. But we're, right now, again, it's just a matter of counting the deer. As they say in movies, no deer were hurt with this process. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Those are our consent agenda items. Mr. Fercassi?
Item F removed from the balance because I intend to vote no on it.
Okay. Let's pull that one off. Let's deal with that one at the time. I apologize. I should have asked if anyone wanted to have any pulled before I started to go through the list. But we're at this point now, so let's pull this one off, deal with this. And if you have anything else you'd like to say about item F, Mr. Fercassi?
Yes. I'm not in favor of monitoring it. Number one is $35,000, and there's going to be 10 areas in which they're going to be reviewed for one year. I know these people are experts in monitoring and looking for survey, but I think if you're around the city of Southfield, you already know that there's quite a few deer. So the outcome is almost done. You know how many areas you have. And if the foliage is eaten, you know, you go to where the water is and where the woods are, you'll find that's where the foliage is eaten. I am more concerned about the survey and what it's going to support because when you do a study, you should find out why the study is being done and what are you going to do with the results. And right now, we don't know what the results will do. Are you going to eradicate some of them? You know, there's really no conversation about it. But I feel that before I vote for any survey of how many we have, I mean, I see the herds here. I see quite a few. My daughter's on the west side. I'm on the east side. We both have deer. To me, it doesn't bother me. And a lot of people buy the survey, seem like it really isn't a deal breaker, one way or the other. So I'm just going to vote no.
Okay. Is there anyone else? First of all, now that we...
with the results, and right now, we don't know what the results will do. Are you going to eradicate some of them? You know, there's, there's really no, no conversation about it, but I feel that before I vote for any survey of how many we have, I mean, I see the herds here, I see quite a few, my daughter's on the west side, I'm on the east side, we both have deer. To me, it doesn't bother me, and a lot of people buy the survey, seem like it really isn't a, a deal breaker, one way or the other, so I, I'm just going to vote no.
Okay, is there anyone else? First of all, now that we've heard his objections to having it on the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve this, this item.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through E.
Nope, just, this, we got to deal with F first.
Oh.
Yes. We had to deal with item F because we pulled it from the consent agenda. We need to deal, we, that's the rules, we need to deal with that as it was a, a regular agenda item.
Right, but typically, you would approve the, the ones that are not contested and then come back to the one that has been removed. I mean, it's not a lot of difference either way, but.
We'll, we'll talk. I need a motion to approve the deer browser monitoring services.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the deer monitoring service.
And, no, it's not part of the consent agenda. We removed it from the consent agenda, it is now a regular item on the agenda.
Can we do a roll call?
We can, but we need a second. It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Cruz, and I've asked, been asked for a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
And this is on, on consent?
Agenda item F.
Three, three F, okay. Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Fricassi?
No.
Mr. Brightwell?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
No.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Okay, you have five in favor, two against, the motion passed.
Thank you. Now, I will entertain a motion for items A through E.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through E.
It's been moved by Ms. Morris, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve agenda, consent agenda items A through E. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. We have two public hearings. The first public hearing is a single lot assessment, roll call hearing, and confirmation. Mr. Assessor?
Good evening, counsel, mayor. I bring before you tonight the single lot special assessment role for hearing and confirmation. The single lot special assessments, as contained in ordinance code mandates the procedure for assessing certain costs incurred by the city through its assessment process. The cost with assessments not being paid become a lien on the land and are then placed on the tax bill via a single lot special assessment. The ordinance further states that the assessor shall prepare an assessment role covering all such charges, and the council shall schedule a hearing for confirmation of the assessment role. Such assessments and all interest and charges thereon shall, from the date of the confirmation of the role, be and remain a lien on, upon the property assessed. The provisions outlined within the city ordinance allow for the full reimbursement of all costs associated with labor, material, and service of such incurred, incurred expenses and is subject to this special assessment. The full reimbursement spread is $145,116.24. I am asking that your honorable body conduct a public hearing and approve the attached resolution confirming the single lot special assessment role in accordance with Chapter 1, Section 1.3 of the City Code of Ordinance.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. I will open a public hearing. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak on the single lot assessment, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Seeing no?
Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. You know, a while ago, we had this visioning session for code enforcement, and I just wanted to know, from counsel and the administration, has there been a follow-up? I think that code enforcement is doing a great job, but when residents see that some of the city property is not being properly maintained, they may feel as if there's no urgency for them to do it. So I just want to know, will the city have a session about more clearly what these single lot assessments are, how it happens, and give the residents the follow-up on all of the data and resident opinions that you collected during the code enforcement visioning session? And again, I just want to say that we have a great code enforcement department. I think they're doing a great job, they're going over and above, but there has to be some better understanding so that we don't get into this situation and every year have to have these single lot assessment public hearings. And I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the, the single lot assessment? I need a motion, and there's a recommended resolution at the bottom of the page.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fricassi.
I'd like to ask a question. Mike, if you know the answer, there's one on.
Could you, first of all, let's put a motion on the table.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the amount of $145,000 regarding false alarms, code violations, and whatever have you.
It's been moved by Mr. Fricassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the single lot assessment and the roll. Now, Mr. Fricassi.
Mike, I, I just want to, Mr. Radcliffe, like 231, a code violation, $8,100, what do, if, do you know what that would be, you know, as far as a code violation? Is that codes that were not, well, if they're being leaned against the property, I guess weren't taken care of, but, but that amount of money seems exorbitant, the type of thing that you run into there, or code enforcement runs into?
Right, most of these costs that have occurred, the, the dialogue has been strictly between the appropriate department and the individual, so I don't have the specifics on either one of these.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Mike. I just, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring up.
Don't go away.
I just wanted to bring up the, two of them, one on 272, which is almost $4,600, also a code violation. I, I think if, if they are unusually high, I'd like to know what that, what went on in that particular case.
Might be able to offer, sometimes when they're, you know, in that range, it could be a demolition that was ordered by the court, and so that's a possibility as well, that you could see something in that $8,000 range.
Right.
That makes sense, yeah.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Is it safe to assume, because this was a public hearing, that all of the individual homeowners or business owners, landowners, were notified for this public hearing?
Yes, absolutely, they've been notified several times, but specifically on this public hearing.
Okay, and then the other question I had is in regards to street lighting. I noticed that there's about almost $3,000 of street lighting. Aren't most of those street lighting bills based, don't they come in on your water bill? How would you have a separate item for street lighting?
I, I don't know if I have an answer for that. Some of the street lights are associated with some of the associations, so it's either, we have a parcel number, so it wouldn't be an individual, I mean, it would be an individual as opposed to a, an association, but.
So, for example, I am looking at one, it is, it is a homeowner association, so does that mean that they, that association applied for, let's say, a special assessment to have the neighborhood in lights, and they just haven't paid that bill?
Correct, there's a, the monthly bill, their quarterly bill that comes in would be billed directly to the homeowners association, so assuming it would be delinquency on that, that bill to the association.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brightwell?
Mr. Radcliffe, given that I'm a new, failed a new council person, are these numbers consistent with prior year numbers as for quantity, number, and dollar value?
Actually, it's down a, a bit. We've been in the $200,000 range the last number of years.
Okay.
It is down.
Okay, that's.
And I think most of it, too, is very, there's less false alarms from what I've seen in prior years.
Okay.
So those are being better managed.
Any other questions? All right. I need a motion.
I made a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Support?
I support it.
I don't think there was a support, though.
Yeah.
I supported it.
Let me get back here. Yes, I did. Don Fricassi and Mr. Mandelbaum. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. I apologize. We have a public hearing B. It's PSLU 17-0002.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, counsel, Mayor Cyver. This item is PSLU 17-0002. This is a special use request of Ann Johnson, Baby Genius Learning Center, to use an existing house for a group childcare home for more than six, but no more than 12 children. Property located 20320 Alhambra. This is on the north side of Alhambra between Ranchwood and Evergreen Road. This particular facility is currently being run as a family childcare home for up to six children, so it is currently licensed by the state of Michigan. We do require, in the city of Southfield, that if you want to go more than six, we do have a special use request for up to that 12, and we would have to sign off on that as a city. This is a first-floor use. In the past, a number of these childcare homes that have come before you have been in the basement, but this is a first-floor childcare center. There are various pictures in your packets this evening, not only showing the layout of the first floor, but also what the interior currently looks like, as well as the exterior. Particular facility was inspected by the city in March, and no violations were noted at all. With that, I do have a short video presentation for you.
PSLU 17-0002 is a special use request of Ann Johnson of Baby Genius Learning Center to establish a group childcare home. The property is located at 20320 Alhambra, on the north side of Alhambra, between Ranchwood and Evergreen Road, and Section 15 of the city. The subject property, as well as the properties to the north, south across Alhambra, east and west, are zoned R2, single-family residential. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property contains a single-family home. To the north is the rear yard of the subject property, enclosed by a wood fence. To the south is the rear of the subject home. To the east is a wood fence separating the property from the residents next door, and to the west is a chain link fence with a shed beyond. The site contains .22 acres of land with 65 feet on frontage on Alhambra and a depth of 150 feet. The special land use request is to allow a group childcare home within the single-family residential zoning designation. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use were the standards and conditions of Article 5, Single Family Residential District, as it relates to group childcare homes. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, noting moderate-density single-family for this parcel, and the petitioner is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
The staff has no other comments at this time, but we will read our recommendation to the record after completion of the public hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that, in the audience, that wishes to speak on this, this subject, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening at-home viewers. Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. This PSLU 17-0002 has come before this council before. I was very impressed with Mrs. Johnson, first of all, for the name, Baby Genius Learning Center, the fact that she has six children already, and she wants six more children. I was impressed by the fact that her house was set up for it, all of the necessary precautions that she went through to set up the house, the issues about the fire drills with the children. My only concern was the backyard and a tree stump, and it sounds as if maybe that's already been taken care of, according to our city planner, Mr. Jeff Spence. Happy to know that with the city inspection, that there was no violations, so I want to state on the record that I am in support of PSLU 17-0002, the special use request of Ms. Ann Johnson for the Baby Genius Learning Center, and we need a lot of those in the city of Southfield. Maybe we could use more learning centers as opposed to strip malls. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this subject? Come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Richard Meltzer, 20850 Wink Street in Southfield. A lot of this proposal sounds very good, but I do have concerns, and my concerns revolve around the fact that currently it's licensed for six, and they want to escalate that to potentially up to 12. Now, this property is on a very nice residential street, right in the middle of the street, right in the middle of the block, and I'm just very concerned for the precedence that it sets to have a dozen cars potentially showing up in the morning and, again, in the afternoon, creating a bit of a traffic jam, essentially establishing commerce in the middle of a very nice residential neighborhood. It seems very inappropriate to me, it seems disruptive to the integrity of the neighborhood, it seems potentially to be a threat to adjoining houses, property values, and the like, generally kind of undesirable, whereas six may be kind of handled, a little bit quiet, on the down-low, as it were. When you take it up to 12 already, you have a lot of traffic coming in and going out. I've seen, I'm not in that immediate neighborhood, but I do have people not far from me that have entertained similar situations, and as long as the numbers are small, it's not very obtrusive, but as they go up to, let's say, a dozen, I think that it crosses a line there somewhere, and I think that that may be the case here, so I think it's, it's really not a good idea in terms of the integrity. I've seen businesses shut down, as you're not supposed to operate a business out of your home in Southfield, I've seen businesses shut down by the city that had no impact whatsoever on, on the residential area, and Southfield shut them down. This is a case where essentially you're running a business, and I guess, given it's a special class, that seems to be okay, but, like I say, at some point, I think it escalates to the point of just being too obtrusive. I'd like to pick up on Pam's idea, when she talked about the strip malls, it seems to be a good business, a good service, but rather than burying it in the middle of a residential area, I think that it would be well, well-served for the community to offload it into more of a commercial area, or at least an area with much bigger lots, as we do have situations like that in Southfield. And in fact, if some of you maybe know the old Perry Cave, very close to the high school, that property is, is abandoned right now, it would be perfect for somebody to take that over, doesn't butt up against any residents, residences at all, it's already set up completely. It's already set up completely for, for, uh, like a learning center type of situation. So I'll leave it at that. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this subject? Give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Boyle. My address is 7241 Bramall Avenue in Detroit. I am the homeowner of the house two doors down from this residence. I was well aware that there was a childcare center in it and had no problem with there being six residents or six, uh, children in the house. And, um, but I think at the, uh, 12 is a little bit much for the, uh, for that neighborhood. Uh, I cite the, the reasons of, uh, increased traffic volume. And I really don't know where, um, the recreation, where 12 children would recreate, uh, find recreation in that small backyard. The backyard is no larger than, um, the backyard in my house, uh, at, uh, twenty-three, 300. Um, my parents bought that house, uh, in 1976. Upon their passing, I inherited it, and, uh, I also subsequently finished a mortgage on it. And, um, I think that everybody on that block, uh, is very well-kept, and they're very diligent about keeping their houses and their property and, uh, tightened, squared up. Um, I've used a place for my family only. I've, uh, currently seen how I live in Detroit, and, and I did at the time of my parents' passing. Uh, I had to register the house, uh, as a rental property. And I've done so, and it's, I'm completely compliant with all the rental codes and, uh, and the, uh, whatever needs to be taken care of. I just think that this is, uh, an area that is quiet, and it's, it's, um, an area that I intend to retire to in, in another 11 months. And I'm very concerned that being two horses away from this, that it would impact negatively any resale value or the appeal of a resale, you know, to a potential buyer. I know if I was looking for a house in a nice, quiet neighborhood, I wouldn't want to live next door to a, uh, childcare center that had up to 12, uh, children involved in it. So I think that a brick-and-mortar structure, a building that is in an area that's set up for that would be a much better use of that, that neighborhood. I don't think that there is, uh, I think there's plenty of those kind of buildings available in Southfield. And it doesn't really appeal to me, or would be not be the best use for that residence as a 12-student, uh, childcare center. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this subject? Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Ms. Seymour?
Yes, would, um, I'll ask our deputy planner, our assistant planner. Were people in the neighborhood notified?
First, let's put a motion on the table.
Um...
Let's put a motion on the table first.
Also moved, Mr. Chairman?
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve this site plan, PSP one seven, excuse me, I'm, uh, PSLU one seven zero 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 two.
May I continue?
No. Uh, any discussion?
Yes, um, I wonder if, I just want to know if the neighbors have been advised of this, because obviously one of the homeowners is aware of it, but I wonder if the others have been advised of what, you know, this increase to 12, if they're aware of that.
Yeah, in, in accordance with state law, we are required for any special use to send notice to everyone within 300 feet of the property. We do it 350 feet, so everyone within 350 feet of this property would have been notified. Not only personally in the mail, but it was also in the newspaper.
When were they not, when was the mailing done?
They would have been required to be notified a minimum of 15 days before the meeting tonight.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Did anyone speak against this during the public hearing?
No, they did not.
Okay. Um, we have a motion on the table.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, yes?
I'd just like to make a comment, um, just throwing up a little flag here and there. Um, you know, looking at the size of the homes that are in Southfield and the value that they're going for in the marketplace. Uh, I don't want to see these homes purchased, um, you know, we are concerned about rentals, but I'm also concerned about those that are, are for foster care homes and for daycare and being used for something other than residential. Uh, I consider this commercial. It's, uh, money-making operations, and they really don't belong in, in, uh, residential areas. But because of the laws, they can be placed there. But, uh, I just want to throw up a flag that because we don't get too many of them. We're just, it seemed that we just had a couple on the books last week in the east side of the city, and now this one, and it seemed like they're coming along a little faster.
If I may through the chair, um, in response to the question, did anyone else, um, uh, write letters against this prop, uh, this project? There were concerns from the neighbors that were expressed. Uh, a number of those concerns, however, uh, had to do with this property being used as a, uh, a home for child, for, um, for troubled teens or children. Uh, there was a concern that, um, we did clear that fact up, that it was not a home for, for troubled teens. It was going to be a 24-hour operation. Uh, so I did have a conversation with the person who originally sent a letter to the city. Um, but there were concerns out there with regard to this home, yes.
Okay, I saw in the notes that, uh, she takes care of children from one years old to five years old.
Correct.
So that's hardly troubled teens.
No.
Uh, any other discussion? We have a motion, uh, by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, to approve this, uh, public, this, uh, PSLU one seven dash zero 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 two. Are we prepared to vote? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let the record show that there are six yays, one nay. We have one site plan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is SP seventeen dash zero 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 two. This is a site plan review request of Eric Klooster, Informed Studio, on behalf of the owner, Lawrence Technological University, to construct a four-story, 88,718 gross square foot student housing facility with 308 beds on the northern parking, uh, northern parking lot of the LTU campus. Um, this particular item, if you recall, uh, did come before the Council Site Plan Committee, uh, earlier this month. Uh, it did get favorable response and a recommendation to come to this meeting this evening by the Site Plan Committee. Uh, LTU has seen a large amount of growth on, on campus, including the introduction of, of new sports, uh, programs on the campus itself. Um, that has necessitated the need for additional student housing. Uh, so if you recall, a couple of years ago, uh, LTU did come in for a brand-new housing facility, uh, which opened up, I believe, last year. Uh, again, they have a need for additional, uh, housing on campus, and this particular, uh, facility would suit their needs for right now. Uh, so again, 88,000 square feet, 300 beds. Uh, and, uh, I do have the, um, petitioner here this evening, Mr. Klooster. Uh, he does have a presentation for PowerPoint to show the council. Uh, so if, if I may, uh, Mr. Klooster can continue on with the presentation then.
Sure thing. If you'd give your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Klooster, representing Informed Studio, 235 East Main Street, Northville, Michigan. Thank you. As, uh, Mr. Spence illustrated, the, the proposed project is located on the west side of the existing north parking lot. You can see, you can see that the site plan right now is existing, has a fairly defined district to the north that includes the athletic buildings, and then a fairly defined district to the south that includes the academic buildings. And then there's two existing residential buildings kind of located in the middle, separated by a large expanse of parking lot. The proposed solution places the new housing building adjacent to the existing residential buildings to create a new resident district that really starts to unite and define the campus and create a more pedestrian and cycle-friendly campus. The existing site is located, as we discussed, in the existing parking lot. Pulling up the massing of the existing building, we start to create a new outdoor recreational area for the residents in the existing buildings, as well as the new proposed housing building. Um, by splitting the mass of the existing building, we are reinforcing that pedestrian flow and creating a new pedestrian corridor to really unite the different districts located on the campus. Elected to carve out the bottom floor of the, of one tower in order to create new community facilities that can function for the entire resident community, um, not just the new building, but the, the existing residential buildings as well. And then you can see from this slide that we've brought a lot of new green infrastructure into the, what was once an existing parking lot. We have a net reduction of about 50,000 square feet of impervious area. So we're really reducing kind of the demands on the existing storm, uh, city infrastructure. You can see from the site plan here, um, again, really redefining that new green space that we brought into what was once parking lot. We have two pedestrian corridors that we've created, one between the existing residential buildings and the proposed building, and then one between the two buildings that really reinforce that pedestrian connection back to the campus. As far as our landscaping goes, we've, really, our strategy is to create a dense kind of planting area to the east area where we're up against the parking lot to really start to layer some soft, um, landscape materials to buffer the new building against the existing parking areas, and then more open recreational grass sod-type areas against the existing residential communities to create new outdoor recreation spaces. Looking at our, our landscape plan, you can see all the really defined landscape materials and the, the detailed landscape areas that we've proposed, um, against the new proposed parking aisle and the sod areas that have been proposed to connect to the existing residential areas. Looking at the first-floor plan, you can see that we've provided a new, uh, indoor bike parking garage, um, part of the campus goal to really promote and encourage, uh, cycling activity, not just within the campus, but connecting to the surrounding communities. We've provided indoor bike parking for approximately 40 bikes. Then we've also provided a outdoor bike parking area for approximately 12 bikes. Looking from the south, you can see how the building starts to create a new kind of urban street that can be accessed along the east, that starts to separate the building from the, uh, existing parking areas, and then opening up to those two pedestrian corridors that start to connect the campus. And again, looking at that pedestrian corridor, that really starts to define the connection back to the campus. See some of the materials that we've, um, proposed, fitting with the material palette that exists on campus, including corrugated metal siding, some brick accents, some glass curtain walls. And then down that pedestrian corridor that we've created down the center, where we really reinforced that cycling and pedestrian activity. We provided nice, bright white panels to really keep this as a active urban area. Again, defining the, the entry points with the yellow accent panels. Um, you can see we've really, um, focused on creating a nice, welcoming, warm environment down the center of this courtyard. Just a couple of other items to touch on. Uh, we have proposed a, uh, new art project, um, as part of the, kind of, the Public Arts Commission. Um, the university is proposing a bronze statue of a kind of prominent Detroit figure, um, to be located on the campus. Um, this is kind of to fulfill the public art requirement. They've also stepped up an initiative with the city of Southfield to provide bike rental locations, um, and two locations on campus, one at the existing kind of technology building, and then at the existing athletic fieldhouse. That kind of concludes my presentation. Um, I'll open it up to any questions or comments.
Yeah, if I may through the chair, um, some of the other items above and beyond just the, uh, the dorms themselves, uh, staff looked at, uh, increasing the pedestrian connections, um, along Northwestern Highway. Uh, currently, there is a multi-purpose fat, uh, path that extends from Civic Center Drive down to the most northerly, uh, entrance into the university. Uh, that 10-foot wide multi-purpose path will be, uh, continue south to the southernmost drive. So we're increasing the pedestrian connection there, as well as pedestrian connections from Northwestern Highway into the campus itself. Uh, also, they're maintaining their stormwater management on-site, uh, and they do meet all the requirements for parking. Uh, there are landscaping requirements, the building setbacks and building heights. So they do meet all site plan requirements.
Okay, I need a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan, PSP seventeen dash zero 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 two.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve PSP seventeen dash zero 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 two. Is there any questions, any comments? Uh, I have one question. Uh, Lawrence Tech was, uh, on the front edge of geothermal technology. Is that going to be used in this building?
Actually, the, the heating and cooling system for this building is not going to be geothermal. It's actually a, um, advanced heat pump system. So they're using condensed, um, condensation technology and, um, other sorts of engineering feats to really reduce the energy impact. Um, so they're using a, a cooling tower and, uh, high-pressure boilers that will then work with the heat pump systems in order to really reduce the energy requirements. Um, the university is committed to its, um, kind of, energy stewardship. So the building is designed for LEED Silver criteria.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions? Are we prepared to vote? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. All of a sudden, our, uh, microphones got pretty loud. Um, the next item on our agenda, although you went off, no. Next item on our agenda are, uh, communications, the first item. Uh, the first person that asked for recognition is Ms. Geraldine Amato. If you would come to the microphone, you give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
We, here in this nation, are not a free people.
Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
You already gave, this is not a public hearing. It's public comment, and you already gave my name, and you're running my time.
But it has to be for the, has to be for the record.
Can you start all over with the time?
Would you give your name and address for the, for the record?
Kind of start the time over, and I'll be back.
Uh, the next person is, uh, Mr. Gerard Mullin.
You're running the time.
Uh, your time, you walked away from the microphone.
I asked you to start the time over. You started it. Now I will start.
I ask you to give your name and address for the record. Please do that.
But you were running my time while you were talking.
Please do that.
Geraldine Amato, in Southfield. My phone number, 330-647-1937. I come here again as a volunteer to reiterate my concern about the future of our nation. We are not a free people. We are a colony of the internationalists. Every institution, every profession, every industry is controlled by the people who have confiscated the wealth of this nation by intrigue, treachery, murder, and all the other ways that would-be totalitarian seize power. We are on the verge of a totalitarian murderous police state. Ritual murders and ritual sexual assaults are part of changing the character of a nation by weakening and ruining and getting rid of people that are not wanted. The Federal Reserve Bank is a private bank. It's part of the international banca cartel. The Federal Reserve Bank is a private bank, it's part of the international bankster cartel. The federal flag that's worshipped at the beginning of this meetings is under God of this world. We have forgotten our Creator God. If we, the people, if the good people of this nation do not return to serving the Creator God, the great God Almighty, we are a lost people. The same folks who are destroying all these nations around the earth and running refugees here are the same people going to bring this nation down. Refugees coming here is a further distraction for us. We are told that we are the land of reception of all the lost souls around the world that are being persecuted by their government people. It's a, it's a confidence game to put us into la-la land when we don't understand that we are on the verge of the same collapse. Resistance all over the earth is being squelched and being stomped. Our children here are being destroyed. Parents don't have time to take care of their own children, they got to farm them out to the establishment's frontline folks. If we do not, oh, and the Ameri, I want to bring this up before my abruptly cut off. The American Academy for Environmental Medicine has documented that much of these cell phone towers, wireless components everywhere, computerized electric meters are affecting intimately the vitality of our people. Southfield has a particular problem with that. There's an overabundance of enhanced output, cell phone towers, communication towers, et cetera. I would ask that the good people here would inquire of the American Academy for Environmental Medicine to assess what the people here are, are, are being exposed to. Hospitals proliferate around here, there are many sick people, people that are weak are further destroyed by these elements that we cannot see with our eyes, but they are affecting.
Thank you, your time is up.
Yeah, your time is up, Sarah, too, soon.
The next person is, that asked for recognition is Mr. Gerard Mullin. If you give your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Mr. Chairman, earlier this evening, this council held a review for a site plan regarding Lawrence Tech that was advertised in the April sixth issue of the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets a copy of for free. This advertised notice was totally unnecessary. Why? Well, because there is no legal nor logical reason for this notice and no other city in Michigan publishes such a notice. And to top it off, it costs the Southfield taxpayers, that's you folks, big bucks to boot. In fact, over the last five years, these worthless notices have cost tens and tens of thousands of dollars. Your dollars, my dollars, our dollars. Publishing these useless notices is just another example of an out-of-control spinthrift council. No surprise here. After all, this council here tonight is the very same council that recently gave one of its favorite employees a thirty thousand dollar bonus, a top of thirty thousand dollar a year raise. Yes, you heard me right, a thirty thousand dollar a year raise. Even this is small potatoes when compared to the millions and millions of wasted dollars given away each year by this council in the form of tax abatements to council's favorite corporate friends like the corporate criminal Denzel, a convicted felon convicted in January twenty twelve by Uncle Sam for bed rigging and price fixing. And then, nine months later, on October twenty-second, twenty twelve, Denzel, a well-known notorious felon at that time, was rewarded with a tax abatement by this council, my council, our council. Our council needs to be changed. We can get that change this November, November the seventh. Thank you.
The next person that asked for recognition is Ms. Pamela Gerald. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
And just for the record, residents don't have to give their address publicly, they can give it to the clerk.
Start the clock, start the clock.
Aside, the city has had very detailed visioning sessions regarding the Northland Mall site. Residents are able to give suggestions on, or they were able to give suggestions on what they wanted to see at this site. The city told the residents that they were going to be transparent with the Northland project and the residents would have a say. I recently found out that, and maybe the city administrator or the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, that all of the meetings for Northland are private. In other words, the city has staff members and what you're calling residents, but the residents happen to be elected officials or city officials that are on this recommending body committee. I'm really surprised that if residents are supposed to have a stake in it, that there are no civilian, and I'll just refer to them as civilian-type residents on this committee. So what you basically have is a recommending body that's made up of city officials and city employees. The, the meetings are private and then, once you make a decision, you bring it before council, but you're not really giving the residents input. Now, you say that we can say something about it at the council meetings, but three minutes is not enough time to talk about it. You used to have separate meetings and you changed those meetings to study sessions to stop people like me and others from being able to speak at two meetings in one day. That was very clever. So I just want to ask you, do you feel that you made a mistake buying this property for two point four million dollars? Have you thought about all the costs that you're going to incur with this property until you get a developer? Now, you guys said that Northland is prime property and it was at one time, but it's not now. So do we have any viable developers that are looking to develop Northland? Because recently, we turned it into a brownfield. So if this, if this is supposed to be prime real estate, why did you need to do it in, turn it into a brownfield? And even with the brownfield designation, do we have anybody? Who's marketing the property? Is it you? Is it the mayor? Is it the business director that's being paid a whole lot of money to do what? Take clients out to lunch? I'm just not sure. So I'm hoping that you guys consider buying the blood plasma place because I don't think any developer is going to want to spend ninety to maybe a hundred million dollars to develop that property. You got to involve east of Greenfield, which is Oak Park, you got to involve south of the baseline, which is Detroit. And until you guys come together about this development, I don't know if it's really going to happen, but I hope it does.
The next item on our agenda is council. Council, Mr. Brightwell.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to. I will bring up an item that I brought previously several months ago when I became aware of it. Comcast offers an Internet Essential program. It's a program for low-income individuals where you can have internet in your home and it's pretty much, one of their slogans is there should be no limit to where you can learn. And eligible families are pretty much, where you have a child that is eligible for the National School Lunch Program, lives in an area where Comcast serves. Now, I won't pretty much go any further, but if you, if you, if you have a child in school, you, you're able to get internet access for nine dollars and ninety-five cents a month. And once you're eligible for this program, you will, they will have a tutorial program to teach you how to actually use the internet. The only thing you have to do is pretty much reach out to Comcast at one eight seven seven six five nine seven six eight seven. I think this is a wonderful program. And I mentioned it before about seven, eight months ago, but every time I see this, I can just see how essential it is to learning for young kids and everybody should have access to the internet. And that's it.
Okay?
Yep.
Anyone else? Mr. Mantlebaum.
Thank you. I just want to talk about something a little bit personal, but still something that's done worldwide. So today is marked as the Holocaust Remembrance Day, or Yom HaShoa in Hebrew. It's marked as people around the world gather to commemorate the millions killed by the Nazis during World War Two. Over the course of the Holocaust, Nazi Germany slaughtered six million Jews as well as millions of others, including gay people, individuals with disabilities, and political enemies. This somber day is acknowledged annually and was established by the Israeli Parliament in nineteen fifty-one. Today, communities, museums, synagogues, and others mark Holocaust Remembrance Day by holding ceremonies that emphasize the importance of remembering what happened during the Holocaust and focus on passing down memories of survivors to future generations. I had family that unfortunately died in the Holocaust. My grandparents, whom I visit regularly and actually visited yesterday, are Holocaust survivors. Their stories of, of survival are no match to any movie that anyone has ever seen. My wife's grandparents as well, who lived in Southfield for many years, were also survivors. My great-grandfather, whom I had the opportunity to meet, was actually taken into a concentration camp in Germany and through a series of events, which is a story for another time, was released by the Nazis and allowed to return home and eventually made his way to America. We have many Southfield residents, many, even those who are members of our boards and commissions are survivors. Unfortunately, many of those who survived are older or have passed on and it is up to us as a people to educate the world, to educate about world genocide. I had the opportunity in two thousand and one to go on an educational trip to Poland. I spent a week there with a few hundred other students visiting towns, cemeteries, concentration camps, and other historical sites, most of which are still standing or have, have a memorial marker. It was an unbelievably educational trip while at the same time mind-numbing thinking how this could ever happen. There was a bill passed last year in our state legislature that was co-sponsored by our state rep, Jeremy Moss. It's House Bill Forty-four ninety-three, also known as Public Act One Seventy of two thousand and sixteen, that all Michigan public schools must teach regarding the nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty massacre of Armenians and the Holocaust. The law recommends a combined six hours of genocide lessons be taught at some point between grades eight through twelve and requires the governor to make appointments to a fifteen-member genocide educational panel. I would also encourage anyone who has, who has not had a chance to visit the Holocaust Memorial Center in Farmington Hills. Teaching students or anyone about genocide is important because we should remember and learn about these terrible events while continuing to work toward a more tolerant society. I think Southfield does a great job in tolerance and diversity. We have many diverse cultures, religions, people in this great city. We all get along and we respect one another. We have an annual international festival here in the fall that speaks to that diversity. Looking around this room, at this table, and as well as the audience, we are very diverse. Southfield is a model of diversity. I'm glad that I'm part of the City of Southfield, that we, where we get along with one another and have mutual respect, which is also evidenced by the fact that we had a resolution this evening making Southfield a welcoming city to refugees and immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was looking at the cement job, the project on Evergreen Road just north of, of the expressway. I was trying to understand, you know, how that project is being laid out and being done. In other words, there's sections in there that are running north and south, small sections, smaller than a four-way plywood. And then there's several of those scattered like in the first, I don't know, a hundred feet of the expressway. I know we have a lot of projects underway and I'm very concerned that, you know, everybody's trying to monitor this, this work so that it holds up more than two years, you know, and, and we have to start looking at it again and, and not getting the years that we should have by the new construction. And I was wondering, who is, is the state or county or, or all, all the inspections done by an engineering firm or by us? And Fred, why I'm saying that is, and I got this thing here, you know, you've got some sawing, grinding into the sections, right? You got, I want to know what the, what the cement mixture is. You've got stones coming up out of that cement about the size of this already and it's hard part. And you have sections of, of the, where the, where it's put together seams, you know, and there's some cracks in that. And I just think that, looking at it just from what I know, you know, in cement work, that, boy, I think somebody's got to look at that project. I know they're going to try to cover it up with a lot of hot tar, but, but somebody's got to inspect these things so that they uphold, you know, and, you know, you see even Telegraph Road where the contractors did that road, you know, you already see asphalt in the seams when you get around, you're on the road and all that up there in Pontiac, they're falling apart already. And I guess I just don't want that to happen again in, in Southfield. I think the asphalt job that's been done on Telegraph Road isn't holding up. There's spots underneath the bridge and there's spots at Telegraph and Nine Mile Road that already have a lot of, of asphalt put in there to compact the, the holes. I just, just concerned about it. It costs a lot of money to, to build these roads and, and they've got to give us some wear and tear. And I, I don't know who's doing those inspections, but that's just my observation. The little, I've looked at it and I, you know, they've been driving trucks on it and moving equipment on it and everything else and, you know, I guess I, I'm interested in making sure that the jobs are done right.
As we, to the council, I'm happy to bring in the city engineer and our consulting engineers. Various projects, depending upon whether they're federal and state, materials are tested at the point of production, at the point of installation. Every batch, every batch of concrete, everything from the temperature that it's being poured in and how long the truck is that, there's extensive footnotes, extensive notation on all of that. But I'm happy to bring in our consulting people to talk about what we do in the production, the installation, and then even the aftermath and the monitoring. It's not uncommon for a job that was done two, three years ago, still not to be closed out. And we're still working on what we call warranty issues. So, but I'm happy to schedule some time, possibly as soon as our committee of the whole meeting in May, to discuss what we're doing to deal with these situations. And I, you know, we do a lot of testing before soil, engineering, materials are tested. And I'm happy to bring the city engineer and other consultants in to discuss that matters.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying and, but, you know, it's not just one stone is up, there's probably three in that same area that are up where the grinding took place. And that, that little hole right there is going to, where that stone came out of is going to be a problem when you have water settling in that and freezing. And I just, I just kind of concerned about all these roads. People are talking about monitoring them and, and investigating these, why they're not holding up. And being in construction years ago, I look at this as, as just a... And being in construction years ago, I look at this as just a fad right now, something I enjoy doing, but I think that it needs some kind of attention. You know, like out in front of City Hall on Evergreen Road, the day that it poured rain, and the guy's trying to hot tar the seams, you know, it's not going to stick, you know, and it happens. And I'm not, it's not blaming anybody. I just think that there's so much construction going on, I think that the talent is not on the jobs. The people who are not doing the jobs don't really care. Get the job done, go on to the next one. But I don't want to see these $800,000 expenses that, have to redo them. And, you know, we had that Franklin Road and the Service Drive by on Northland, and I'm just concerned, you know, what's going on with our inspections. And I'd like to hear from somebody on that. And I'd also like them to review and go down there and take a walk and look at it.
We're happy to schedule that.
Ms. Seymour, did you have your hand up?
No, nothing.
Mr. Cruz.
Yes, last week at our council meeting during public comments, we had a individual resident came in talking about some concerns she had with her apartment complex in terms of the trash and rodents and things of that nature, and that was unsettling in and of itself. But what I have found personally, and I don't know about some of my other colleagues, seemed to get more and more concerns from residents about some apartments within the city with similar type issues. And I can give two examples just in the past week or so, where I got a video from one resident showing me rain just pouring in her apartment while it was raining outside, just dropping it and taking days to come out to even take a look at it, and seemingly wasn't even cleaned up properly when it did come, which I think, and I don't know about how to, you know, it's potential for mold and other things to come up in those situations. And another resident I had had the entire ceiling in the bedroom fall in on the bed. Thankfully, she wasn't in there at the time, but then it took six weeks or so for them to even address the issue, so she was sleeping on her couch and stuff like this. But the point I'm getting at is, are we doing enough to help residents that are in rental situations and on these properties? I know, you know, we do enforcement on the outside of some of these facilities, but on the inside, I mean, I think what we're seeing on the outside is not equivalent to what's happening on the inside of them. And I just, I think we want to have the same level of care for those residents that have those situations. And I mean, I try to myself to make calls on behalf of them, but I don't know, is there more we can do on regulating or looking at, I guess, standards, if you will, for the apartments on insides as well when they come to our attention?
If, and Madam Attorney, keep me straight on this, but I think we're able to do the common areas, but we have to be invited into the apartment itself in order for a building inspector to go in there. We can't say, knock on the door and say, "Let me in so I can inspect your apartment."
Mr. President, under the current ordinance, but obviously, state law allows a broader type of apartment inspections. And I think that at times, over the years, councils kind of struggled with that, you know. Should there be some regular type of inspections? And I think that's, again, if council wants to entertain that discussion at this point, you know, we could certainly make a presentation on that in terms of doing some different inspection programs. Obviously, that, you know, entails resources and so forth, but it's a discussion that we could certainly have.
Yeah, I would think it would be a fairly serious problem if the ceiling is falling on beds and-
Sure, I mean, a ceiling, you know, that's appropriate, that our building department would be called out there, and that's not, I mean, that's probably a roof issue. And that's something that they do all the time. They go out on roof issues. So, but, you know, obviously, as some of these apartments are aging, there could be issues that, you know, that we maybe should be looking at in terms of-
I think it's a good idea, and I want to refer this to our administrator that goes on another, a future item that we can discuss. How do we go from here? Okay?
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Okay, let's move into the mayor. The mayor's portion of the agenda.
Just have a couple of quick comments. First of all, just another reminder to anybody that's listening that the 46th District Court's Amnesty Program goes through May 12. And this is an opportunity for people who owe fines to pay them with the fees waived. You can contact the 46th District Court. Another deadline on the same day is our photo prize, Southfield Photo Prize. We're excited about this contest. Today, virtually everybody has a camera, and the photos have to be taken in Southfield. But if you live, work, or go to school here, you're free to enter. And of course, all entries must be in digital format. The complete details on the Southfield Photo Prize are available on the city's website under Community Relations. And last week, I reported that we had a very successful Comcast Cares Day. Even so, it rained that morning. Fifty-seven hearty souls showed up, and we cleaned up the park and did trimming and wood-chipped the trails. And because it rained, we did not have the opportunity to paint the benches in the park or the children's playscapes. And I want to just give an acknowledgement to, again, the Kappa Foundation and Comcast that came out last Friday. We had a beautiful day last Friday, and the painting was done in the park. Freeway Park looks noticeably improved. And once again, we're very grateful to those volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Administration?
I'm just going to make an announcement. On Saturday, the April 29th, is our rebuild today with Rebuild Together. If anyone has any interest in being a volunteer, you can contact our Community Development Department here, and we'll team you up with one of the teams. We have a number of projects identified throughout the city, from work being done on homes as well as in parks. That's Saturday, 29th, and I believe we are starting at 8:00 a.m.
Where are you starting from?
Pardon?
Where do you start from?
I believe we're staging from Eaton Corporation again.
Anybody that wants to volunteer? How do they contact someone?
You can contact Community Development, Rick Lampy, and I'll quick pull up the number. I apologize. I'm sorry.
Okay, why don't we move on, and if you find it, then you-
If you call the switchboard, we'll get you to Rick Lampy. I'm sorry. I think the number in here is his old office number.
Okay. Madam Attorney?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Clerk? Nothing? Your assessor's gone. We have nothing to schedule. We have no ordinances to enact. Is there anything else to come before us this evening? Seeing nothing new, the meeting is adjourned.